The time is 6:05. I will call the September 24th meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Common Council to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and prayer.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, help us to trust you with our decisions and future endeavors. Let us lean on you with our heart instead of relying on our own imperfect understanding. Give us clear guidance in our life. I ask for your help to direct our paths. Give us confidence that your decision is always the best way to go, in Jesus' name. Amen. Yes. Number of councilors, we do have a quorum. Let the records reflect that there is, you know, nine councilors present and that we have a quorum for the committee. This meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Copies of the agenda are located at the back of the meeting room. The next item on the agenda is new business, Resolution Number Eight, 2024, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana concerning approval of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lawrence and the Fraternal Order of Police, Large 159, effective January 1, 2025. At the September 18th, 2024 council meeting, this resolution was referred to this committee for consideration and recommendations. Do we have any questions by the councilors?
Absolutely.
Comments from Zach Brown. Thank you, sir.
Hi. Hello, councilors. My name is Zachary Brown, reside at 11827 Rossmore Drive here in Lawrence. I serve as Mayor's Chief of Staff. Thanks for having us in for the Committee of the Whole to discuss and answer questions on the CBA negotiations that resulted in contract agreements between the Woodfield Administration and the FOP and firefighters' unions. As you will see in front of you, I believe they were left in your cubby by the clerk, as well as via email yesterday, we have provided the full clean contracts, redlined versions showing specific language changes, and a rundown or summary of each change made since the last contract agreed to in 2020. With me tonight to answer any questions you may have are FOP Union President Brandon Raftery, Firefighters Union President Nick Remmel, City Controller Humphrey Nagila, and Brad Boswell, who works with the Figured Drinker Law Firm and represented the city in these negotiations. Unfortunately, Corporation Counsel Amber Finley, Figured Drinkers Tim Moriarty, and Baker Tilly Susan Cowan could not make it tonight, but I also want to recognize their roles in getting us to where we are. I want to thank each of them for their participation during this process, as well as the other members of the FOP and firefighters' union negotiation teams. We said this last week, but I want to reiterate that this was a collaborative effort that I think yielded an agreement that suits both the city and the respective unions and their members. As such, it was passed unanimously by both unions. Getting to the meat of the proposal before you, this contract grants a 5% raise for our police and fire in 2025, followed by successive 3% raises in 2026, '27, and '28. It uses creative ways to increase our recruitment and retention of officers and firefighters, changing the way we pay probationary officers in both the police and fire departments. This is important because it makes us not only more competitive on the hiring side, but also after we hire, where the competition doesn't end with other nearby cities, who often have an opportunity to poach new hires based on higher starting salaries. We provide increased pay for both technical and specialty positions within both departments in this contract. Lawrence now also, if passed, has the, will have the highest longevity percentage in the county, and we've created new benefits for retirees. This contract provides substantial pension-based increases while keeping the percentage of our budget that public safety encompasses static at between 70 and 75% of our annual budget. Under this contract, Lawrence will hold one of the top pension bases in the county, making us competitive not only with cities inside Marion County, but also those surrounding Marion. Frankly, this contract touches every level of officer and firefighter employed by our city in some positive way. And we did it all while leaving the city in a strong financial position for the future. Now, first, I'd like to talk about how we undertook this task and describe our approach. In a level of collaboration and transparency not typical of past negotiations, the city provided a financial overview to the union representatives so that we could set out fiscal parameters that the union reps could follow to make decisions based on what priorities they'd like to address with the money. It was our job to keep them within those fiscal parameters while also doing no harm to operations. This was a novel approach and part of the reason we were able to come up with a deal that is so widely supported and achieves our collective goals, a responsible CBA that is supported by the union and holds the line on public safety spending in regards to percentage of overall budget. Before we open the floor to questions, we did receive some questions prior to the meeting that we'd like to address, which I have right here. Thank you, Councilor Mizer, for sending these in. I'm going to go ahead and address the third question and then invite our union presidents to take on the other two. In question three that you sent over, in Article Five, Section 12, Retirement Accrual Payout, you were looking for a breakdown of the cost differential between these two practices, whether or not we essentially pay out funds as a cash payment or for a 457B deferred compensation plan. There is no cost change associated with this beyond potentially some minimal payroll taxes to the city. Excuse me. What this does do, however, is extends the period of the payout of these benefits to three years rather than one-year lump sum right at the time of retirement. So essentially, it gives us a little bit of a runway to figure out how we can pay some of these payouts that do occur. For questions one and two, I would invite Sergeant Raftery or Remmel to take the stand. We have one and two right here. Councilor Mizer, if you'd like to ask these in a different way, feel free. I just kind of copied and pasted from the email.
Good evening, councilors. Name is Brandon Raftery, President of Lawrence FOP 159. And the question presented before me, it says, "All employees," this is referenced the 2019 time, "all employees covered by the same once-hired honor before December 31st, 2018, with modifications. If hired after January 2019, allowed to carry over 15 sick days, 600 hours per calendar year, previously 200." This is a large increase, any wiggler room, double instead of triple. So let me just speak to kind of some of the reasons that we addressed this particular area. Most certainly, we understand the reasoning behind the adjustments for the 2019, what direction the council and the city were looking to go, and what you were looking to achieve. So upon looking at this, the reason it came into this contract is when we start working on a contract, we talk to our members to identify areas of importance. And in terms of areas of importance on this contract, this particular topic fell directly below salary, to kind of give you an idea of how our members were feeling in this area. When the changes were made, obviously, none of us knew how this was going to play out in terms of practical application. Now that we've had this in place for some time, we've identified some areas that need some adjustment. So with that being said, we've thought that the components that we put in here, particularly to the sick time, were a fair compromise in that we know we can't get complete parity among members, but how can we achieve the goals that the city is looking to do with this accrual of time, but also address the needs of the members? So another reason that this came to be a priority for us is that we have actually lost police officers that we have hired within the first part of their career that have left due to this specific topic, just the way in which they're able to get time off. So if you remember, their career and their vacation time, month to month, which made it very difficult for them to plan a vacation, and so on. It also created issues from a management standpoint when it comes to the first of the year. We go through a bidding process in terms of how we approve sick time or vacation time, and so it's difficult to try to work out the difference between the 2019 people and the people that are prior. It also allows them to enroll onto the hardship leave. But with this being said, we knew that we put some other components into the contract that could incentivize members to start selling off or reducing the amount of time that they have built off. The two components are the trade time, which where you can convert, for the police side, 176 hours, two for one for 85 vacation hours. Then you could take those vacation hours, you have to take them in that given year. So that works for people that may be on the early part of the scale in terms of what the time that they accrue, it gives them an opportunity to earn some more vacation time while reducing that sick time. The second component is the PEP account, which is new for both police and fire. And what that does is currently, people that are pre-2019 can carry over on the police side 102 hours of vacation time into the following year. With the PEP account, essentially, all time must be burnt in terms of vacation by the end of the year. You have the option of leaving 40 hours of vacation time in the bank, which will then be bought back by the city and placed into the PEP account. Those are the terms that we agreed upon. For those that don't want to participate into the PEP account, that's fine, they just have to burn down all their time. So we're no longer going to allow people to do the rollover. And then lastly, I'll mention that when it comes to the 2019 time, we didn't look to adjust vacation scale that's set for both police and fire in terms of your years of service and how you earn that. Those hours stayed the same. Same is true for the amount of holiday time, that stays the same on both sides. So one may ask, you know, why is it important for public safety to have time off? And I will speak to the mental health component to this, that we see it's important for the first responders to have the ability to have this time off, to recoup, to refresh, and to come back to work prepared mentally and physically, to give their best to the citizens of Lawrence. We saw the challenges, particularly the 2019 individuals were faced with, the challenge. And so we feel that what you see before you in the contract is a fair compromise to address some of those needs while also addressing some of the concerns of the city. Counselor, did that answer your question?
I have follow-up questions.
Questions?
Follow-up questions to all of that. You mentioned that, oh, actually, I'm sorry, that was a question for Zach, but I'll flip back to you. I'm sorry for writing things down. How many officers have we lost since 2019 because of the switch?
So I know of two officers.
Okay. How many offi-- oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. That have told me personally that is part of the reason. Could there be more? Possibly, I'm not part of their exit interview.
All right, but we got two. And we do document exit interviews, right? That's not just verbal, we document exit interviews that can--
I know we've not been very consistent on that over the time, so I can't answer that.
Well, as a HR person, I would tell you, a non-documented exit interview is worthless because you can't look at that data accumulated and make some suggestions from that. So if you're not doing that, because I was going to ask you about that, because everything, if this is real money we're spending, it shouldn't be my opinion or your opinion, it should be facts and quantitative, right? So I want to know what that, so we got two is what you know, and I'm going to accept that. And if you had exit interview paperwork that can document that further, I would love to know that. The other question I have is about best practices. I was a part of the 2019, and I also, as a professional, I saw my own employment and other jobs in our community make some sacrifices, some changes like that, you know? Very few places even have sick time and accrued time, but I do understand we're dealing with public safety officers. I do believe that they do need more of that. But if we're going to make a policy, so my question is, you weren't there in 2019, I don't think, a part of that negotiation, or were you?
So I was in this position in 2019, but our lodge, the FOP, was not consulted on this.
Okay, so you weren't part of that. Okay, but you're part of it today.
Part of it today.
So the question I have is, are there other communities that we've, where do we get these ideas from? Did we come up with this ourselves as far as putting the PEP, you know, putting the perf in, you know, the tools that you're talking about? Or is this a best practice from another community that you have quantitative data again, that I can look at this and go, okay, I see? It's not about what we think, because obviously, in 2019, I thought it was a good idea based on what I had seen prior, but just the next contract back, you're telling me there was a bunch of things that were not, that you didn't understand, you didn't vet out? So I want to make sure we're making changes best on best practices, so we're not back doing this again in three more, four more years, whatever, you know?
Sure, no, absolutely. That's a fair question. I think I can take that one. I don't think anyone's necessarily saying what happened in 2019 was the wrong thing or a bad idea. What I think we've seen now is four years or so of data that says we need to right-size the practice, right? So when you make big changes, sometimes you have consequences or things happen that you're not really sure were going to happen that way. I think our point here is--
So I'm sorry, though, I'm sorry to stop you there. That's why I asked them how many people did it affect.
Right.
Right? We got 62 to 67 guys on the, people on the, persons on the department? So I'm saying, do we make a huge shift that has a significant impact to our city budget and the taxpayers? Is that because this is, you know what I mean? Like, what's the fact fact?
Mm-hmm. Right. I think what we're looking here is to find the right place, and I think that we think we're closer with this than we were with the 200 hours.
Okay. So now I go this way, so you think, what are the fiscal parameters that you've mentioned of? Are they quantitative? Are they written? What are they?
Sure, yeah. And I'd invite the controller to potentially supplement me on this question, but essentially, what we did is we opened our books, right? So we worked with Baker Tilly and our controller, along with our FOP and firefighter negotiators, I guess for lack of a better term, to open our books, share our finances, and basically say, hey, guys, we can't afford much, but this is what we can afford. And so what we've, what we essentially did with them is they came with us, and actually, here's a great example right now, they came to us with these binders, right? And these were the requests that they asked for in the negotiations, right? We certainly weren't able, and you'll see, there's many tabs here, we were not able to satisfy all of them, and I think they entered the negotiations understanding that was probably the case. And so what we did is we said, guys, listen, we have a pot of money here that we know that we can fiscally responsibly devote to this contract negotiation. We would like to open this up, let you know exactly what that looks like, so you can go back with your people and decide what out of this book are our priorities that have fiscal impact that we want to prioritize. And so essentially, that's what they did. They came back to us with a proposal, and, you know, granted, it was higher than where we wanted to be to start with, I'm sure you can understand that in a negotiation, right? And we were able to work down to where we landed by having a little bit of back and forth about where the priorities are and how we can fit them financially.
Come on up, come on up, because, come on up, because I'm curious about, you're making some statements that I can't, so one of them I can't find, and I don't, and I'm going to let the other councilors go into the policy of the CBA, but I can't find a pot of money. That's, that's--
That budget actually is, reflects the changes made in the CBA.
So that's what I wanted, so I can't find a pot of money, and that's--
It's been spent. In that book you're holding, it's been spent.
Whoa.
That reflects the changes made in the CBA agreement.
What do you mean, Zach? I'm confused. In the 20, so this is what--
In the 2025 proposed budget, that reflects a budget which encompasses the changes we've agreed to in the 2025 CBA.
Right, and I don't see, so that's what I'm saying, so I don't want to, because I don't see the, it's not there. So you want to talk numbers now, or we want to keep talking policy? Because that's what you use pots of money and all that. So we can just pull open the public safety tax fund, it's a million dollars short, right? We got to go to the general fund, right, at over a million dollars to sub it back, and we also got 90% of our $5 million ARPA is in this budget for '25. So I'm worried about the commitments that we're making to our fire for '26, and then I'm going to leave it, because I know some of my other councilors have more in-depth issues, I think, maybe related to this as well.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the quantitative part, right? That's the quantitative part that we need. Our ARPA is over after we spend the funds in 2025. From my review and analysis of the budget, a lot of these things that we are doing would not be possible if we didn't have that $5.2 million in ARPA. Is that a true statement, Mr. Controller?
So we did shift around a lot of things, or a few line items, from the general fund to be funded by ARPA as an alternative source of funding.
Yes.
And we did that for two main reasons. The first reason was we have to encumber--
Yes.
--ARPA funds by December of 2024. We have five point--
Please.
Five point, give or take, 5 million in ARPA that got approved by the council sometime in June.
Mm-hmm.
Needs to be encumbered by December of 2024. So that was one driving factor.
December of 2025?
December of 2024.
Encumbered, you said. You said encumbered.
Spent by '25. December 2025.
So where is that revenue coming from, right? Because we're good for '25, we all know that. We're good for '25. This contract is for '26, '27, and '28. That 5.2 million, the portion of it that is being encumbered for personal services or equipment or whatever, right? The changes in the contract, anything that's being encumbered as part of that 5 million, where is it being funded? What revenue source for '26, '27, and '28?
Question, so--
And that, that 5 million gets bigger, as you know, every year, right?
So just for clarity, ARPA is only covering about 2.5, 2.3 million of the shifts that we got from the general fund.
But that's significant for our small, little budget, right?
It is significant, but I just want to clarify, it's not--
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I know it's not, well, it's capital. My understanding is ARPA is going to take care of revenue replacement and capital projects--
Correct.
--for the most part. So, you know, if it's half, if it's 2 million, whatever, like I said, it's 2 million point whatever, 2025, that number's bigger in '26, '27, and '28, because we're doing increases, right? So it's going to be bigger than that. And like I said, 2.7 million is, that's 10% of our revenues. That's significant for a city our size.
And Counselor Shevys, I think your questions are valid, and I appreciate that you bring these, but I believe these questions lead us to even deeper conversations in regards on how the City of Lawrence wants to move forward with public safety. The problem is, we have owned this, we have maintained the revenues that we received in public safety tax. The changes are very significant, the increases are very significant if you go back history from 2020. Actually, I think I was looking it back and thinking what the changes were. However, the costs and the expenditures keep going up, probably 4%, 3% inflationary costs year over year. And so what you're seeing now, and I think, I believe that's what you're trying to explain, is now we've gotten to a point where we have this much of expenditure, but this much of revenue.
Mm-hmm.
So the question is, how do we bridge that gap? And I believe that's a policy decision where everyone at stake, everyone, all stakeholders need to discuss on, is cutting the expenditure the best option, or should we focus on how do we increase these revenues to match our expenditures?
Right, exactly. So part of, you know, agreeing to something without a plan of how it can be sustained, you know, our job is not only to make sure that it can be sustained in 2025, it's our job to make sure it can be sustained through the life of the contract, right? We don't want to be in a situation where we can't do raises. Nick, a lot of you have been here long enough that you went years without a raise. We don't want to get back in that situation where because the expenses far outweigh the revenue, we can't give anybody any money. And so then therefore, all of this progress that we have spent for the past nine years getting us into parity will be for naught, because then we will be behind again.
And we do have analysis, I did mention that in our last meeting, that we did analysis before reaching this conclusion, this decision.
So we need that.
To have them here.
So we, I need it, I don't, can't speak for everybody else, I need it.
But the analysis, if it, if the budget book is what matters, right? The analysis is not in the book. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not always right, but I believe in the prior agreement, it gave the council some flexibility that if we deemed that we couldn't afford the raise, we didn't have to, there was some lang, I believe there was language in it that said, if--
It said, based, based on, I'm paraphrasing, but whoever has a copy of the previous contract, I don't have it, there was some language that said basically, if we could afford to give it, and it was approved by the council. So like I said, because--
That's a policy of--
--we already know, let's just be honest, we already know that after '25, we're going to have to get real creative, or something's going to have to happen for us to get a significant revenue stream to fund this long-term. So because we know that, and if we approve this the way it's written, I would only feel comfortable approving it if that language is in there, because I know that we don't have the money in the budget for '26, '27, '28 to do all this stuff.
So the, I mean, I would, I'm happy to pass around this analysis, but the analysis that we ran basically, it shows that the revenues are tight. It's a tight fit, and that's what they, you know, everyone is referring to the transparency.
Tight is, can you just tell us then?
I'm sorry?
So how tight is it? What's going to have to happen there?
At 20, in 2028, looking at this analysis, we'll be right at 23% of the general fund reserves. That's how tight it is.
We'll have to--
We'll have to take out of the reserves in '26 and '27.
Take out 23%?
So our policy has been to maintain 23%--
20%?
Right, of the reserves. But with the analyses and the ask of the, of the 5333 that the public safety is requiring, requesting in the CBA, that puts us at 23% in 2028.
And that does not include, I'm sorry, does that not include any civil raises in that 23%? Civil city employees, or is this just police and fire?
So I did run two analyses. We ran two analyses. So one without the, assuming that there's no raises for this civil city, and the reason is because the civil city not being in the contract, we always decide--
Right, right, right.
Whatever, year over year. So I do have two analyses, and the first one is putting us at 23%, assuming that civil city doesn't get, does not get a raise. But I also have another one, assuming that civil city gets a 3% raise across the board, that puts us right under the 20%, which is 19%.
Which we cannot be.
Well, but also, there's factors to that. So the revenues that we project here are very conservative. It's really hard to project for 2028. So for instance, for the general fund, we're only going with a max levy of 4%. That could change next year.
Yeah, but that's prudent. That's what we should do, right? We should, we should be conservative, because we don't have--
Correct.
--you know, a crystal ball.
Correct.
So we're conservative, and I think we've been conservative with those estimates, and I agree with that practice. So thank you for answering that question, and sorry, Carlos. Counselor Jennings.
What is the ramification, I'm sorry--
Counselor Jennings.
No, no, I was just saying that we would be 3% off where we want to be, the worst-case scenario.
No, we're under for worst-case scenario.
23%.
19. We're under the 20 in worst-case scenario.
And so what is the, and I wanted to bring that before the councils, for our councilors' sakes, and make sure I'm clear, what is the ramification for a city that goes under 20% on the reserve?
For a city or for City of Lawrence specifically?
City of Lawrence.
Well, so that's a policy, again, that's, that's--
It affects us fiscally in our bond rates, right? If we, if our city, just make sure, if our city goes under the 20% reserve, it has an effect, it has, it affects our bond, right? Ability to go--
It does not, it does not necessarily drop our bond rates, our bond rating.
Our ability to go get bonds, our fiscal stance as a city. I thought that was the whole reason why we wanted to be over 20% was because it made us a better bond, a better bonding situation.
And I can't give you an accurate answer with that, that's something I'd have to talk to, speak with our underwriter to know how-- That's something I'd have to talk to, speak with our underwriter to know how.
That's fine. I don't want to get in the weeds.
I try to get in the weeds.
So I guess let's get back on track in the questions that I have because I want to make sure. So you actually, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. You're saying that we really can, we would just give to, we would just pull from the general fund. And you went to '28, but let's just talk about '26. So '26 will, technically in '26, we'll have an 8% pay increase, if I'm following correctly.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
In '26, the pay increase will be 8%. 5 for '25 and 3 for '26.
Yeah, there'll be 3% in addition to the 5% that they received in the previous.
5 and '25, 3 and '26. So the '26 budget would have to fund 8% more salary than the '24 budget does currently.
That's correct.
Right? And so as I'm looking at the revenues, and I think you just said this as well, but I want to make sure I'm saying it and reading correctly. Our revenue stays flat.
Public Safety Tax Fund. Well, for the general, let me, let me reiterate this. So for general fund, this is not the Public Safety Fund what you're looking right now. That is the general fund, impact on the general fund. The general fund.
I'm looking at Fund 2-2, 2-24, Public Safety Tax Fund. I'm looking at that fund right now. It looks like we get the same, pretty much the same amount of money every year besides $100,000, $100,000 or so.
Yeah, it's flat.
That's correct. For the Public Safety Tax Fund, that's correct.
Right, okay. And the Public Safety Tax is the overwhelming majority of what we use to fund public safeties through the Public Safety Tax.
Not necessarily. It is the general fund, actually.
I thought you, I thought the difference was only funded by the general fund. So like this year, I thought if we had $4.4 million in revenue and 5.1 in expenditures, we go get the difference from the general fund.
So you have to understand the total for public safety, police and fire, their budget is about 24 million.
Yeah.
It's not 5 million.
But he's talking about, I think he's comparing the personal services.
Just out of this fund, the budget is 5 million. So you're looking at 5 million out of 24 million.
All right, so the other, the other 19 is coming out of the general fund.
General fund, that's why you see the 75% of the general fund is public safety.
Right.
Because the majority of it comes from the general fund. So I mean, we, I'm glad to talk about the Fund 2-4, but as, as far as the CBA is concerned, the 5-3-3, I believe a chunk of it will be coming out of the general fund, which is the 75% of the general fund.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's what we did the analysis based on.
The 25, did you just say 25 million? No, I'm sorry.
About 24 million.
$24 million will, will increase.
You have.
The budget will go up. So the $24 million, it will.
By 8%.
By 8%?
Yeah.
Correct.
Which is, which is roughly 1.7, 1.8 million.
It does increase by about 1, 4% is about a, about a million. You're right.
Yeah.
So then are you.
8%.
Zach's saying that the general fund goes up by 4%. So is that how we gain it?
Yes. Because the general fund is also increasing by 4% in terms of revenues.
So they're saying it's going to, so, so they're saying that the percentage, so when I, so you're basically saying at '26, the percentage should still be 75, 76% of the general fund. If the percentage, the percentage doesn't change, which then means I can still deliver the same amount of services.
So if you look at.
As long as the fund, the percentages don't change, I'm okay. I'm more concerned about the margin than the actual dollar amount.
Well, I don't see how the percentages don't change when the revenue is pretty much flat from '24 to '25.
4% to property.
So if you look at the document that the chief of police just passed around, the blue line is basically, is basically increasing by 4%. The revenues year over year are increasing by 4%. And so are the expenditures for police and fire increasing. The assumption is it'll increase by 4% as well. And that's why, to Counsel Giles' point, the yellow line at the bottom is really what we're looking at because that's the percentage of the general fund in terms of expenditure.
And there, and there is your fiscal parameter that it doesn't, that the growth doesn't outgrow the 4%.
Correct.
That's, that's what I'm looking for. And that's the importance of a committee.
But that, but let's, but let's not get too excited, okay? Because we are only looking at one thing, and that's personal services, that's salaries. We are not looking at any other inflationary increases, okay? Or anything else. Equipment, anything, capital product, anything. That only makes us even for that, not considering any other increases in the budget.
But I wanted to follow the law.
Just to be clear.
And you're right, and you're right on that. But that's where we have to get creative, like we have in 2025, by using additional or different sources, alternative sources of funding.
Now, Controller, that's a stretch. Using ARPA is not really that creative, right? It's money that was given to us that we have to spend.
Correct.
I agree with you. We do have to get creative. And I just want to make sure that folks are already working on what we're going to do to be creative because we're going to need to do it.
That's correct.
In 2025.
So can we, so that leads me to this. Can we talk about the CUMCAP fund then?
Sure.
Right? Because if, if the general fund 4% rise and the tax takes care of salaries and benefits, then under my research and calling and talking to other people that run towns and what are different strategies and all of that, are we prepared then for our equipment to, to be paid for out of, at least the debt service for, to be paid out of the CUMCAP fund? And like I highlighted in my book, the $300,000 that we have in debt services in the CUMCAP fund, is that for police and fire apparatus, you know, equipment, cars and things like that?
And that's a good point that you bring. So the CUMCAP fund, as you can see in the book, if you have the book before you, I believe we did budget it for a million one in terms of revenue. As you can see, based from the previous, previous years, we've only been at 400, 500 mark. So we've increased that by about half a million thanks to the council for approving the CCD fund as well as the GEO bond a couple of months ago. So that's where these revenues are projecting from. And yes, to answer your question, this would definitely go a long way to cover the capital projects that Counselor Shevys has brought about. And this is one of the ways we get creative in shifting line items, the capital improvement line items. And those could be public safety or, or even a parks playground. But anything that would be considered capital improvement would go under CUMCAP. Plus, and I know this was explained when we were approving the GEO bonds, for us to be able to maintain that rate, that rate, by the way, has gone up from 69 cents to 77 cents, point something. Our goal was 78 cents, so we are right, right on target to getting where we wanted to get. That's what's factoring in this increase. But in order for us to maintain that rate at 78 cents, still have to continue issuing, issuing debt. So next year, yes, we'll definitely have to issue debt. And those are some of the ways that we could use to, to cover some of our capital improvement.
One other question on the, on the sheet that was just handed. I'm trying to turn my phone off. When you look at the 2025, okay, no. I'm going to go to, look at the 2025 estimated, estimated for personal services under fire. I'll just start with fire. And look at the 2026 estimated. I only see a difference at 314,000.
Because the 2025 is where we are estimating with, let me see that. So it's 11, 3, oh, you're just looking at the one line item for.
I'm looking for personal services, fire, and I'm not, the math is not mathing. It's showing 10, 2, 4, 9, 2, 4, 8, 9, 4, 6 for 2025. And it's showing 10, 5, 5, 6, 4, 1, 4 for 2026.
So.
And it's only a difference of 300 and some thousand.
And so I would go back and review that. It just could be, I'd go, I can, I can go ahead and review that and explain, and maybe explain better once I get the right figures. But this is just.
Go all, go all the way across too, please, from '25, '26, '27, and '28. Because those, I mean, I'm just doing the math in my head. And this math is not adding up to the increases that we're going to do.
Give me just one second. I'm just doing the math on my phone, if you don't mind.
I mean, it's like it's .03, .0. It's not, it's not 8%, 10%. Yeah, it, it should be, but it's just, no, I said from, you start with the baseline. Start with the baseline, which is 25, okay? We know, and we already said this, and we already agreed, that we don't have the 5% in, it's going to be covered by ARPA, okay? The increase. So we just said and agreed that in '26, it should be an 8% jump because that's going to have to, yes, because it has to come out of the general fund. And you, you said that, and we all agreed on that about 10 minutes ago.
Right, so just to answer your question on the math part, from the jump from 10, 2, 48 to 10, 5, 56, that's a $300,000 difference.
Yep.
That is a 3% increase. And so across the line from 2025 through 2028, I just did it on my phone to verify that, there is a 3% increase.
Yeah, but where's the 5?
So the 5, according to the CBA, was just for 2025. So it's a 5-3-3-3.
I understand that. But the baseline for salaries will be 5% higher in '20, '26.
Right, because it's 25.
Yes, because we're using, we're not using the general fund to fund 2025 pay increase. We're using ARPA.
Well, we're not.
That's what's been said.
We are not using ARPA to cover that. Just, just one item. Actually, it's just a PERF line item that we are using to cover ARPA, not, not the entire salary.
Let me back up. Let me back up. You know, tit for tat, whatever, right? The money's the money, okay? The money from, for public safety increases, PERF, capital, whatever, a large percentage, you said, of the 5 million is going to go to public safety. That is going to beef up the general fund for us to be able to do those things, right, in 2025? That's an accurate statement, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, once again, where is the 5%? Because in '26, the salaries are going to be 5% higher than what they were, right? And, and so it's going to be 5% plus 3% is 8%. Just think about that. You don't have to, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. Just, can you just review it and then just let us know how it's being captured?
And so that's why we did this analysis. So in '26, like you said, the salary 3% increase in addition to the 5% in '25 puts us at 10, 5, 5, 6 as opposed to the 10, 2, 4, 8. That's just for the fire line item. And then for the police, it puts us at 7, 26 puts us at 8 million as opposed to the 7.4 million. So when you look at the bottom of the line in '26, factoring in all that, that 8%, we are still going to be at 22% of the general fund.
Okay, so, let me, let me just back up. If you look at 2024 budget, that's without any increases. The 9.2 million is without any increases. Will we agree on that?
On 2020, in 24?
Huh? 2024.
Okay, yes.
Pre-new CBA.
Correct.
So if you take that 9.2 and you add, you multiply 8%. The 2026 estimate should reflect that.
Correct.
So do the math. I don't have my calculator. Actually, actually, that's not, plus 8, plus 3, plus 3, right? No, I'm going to let, Humphrey, if you can just confirm those numbers, please. And then just let, you don't have to do it right this minute, but if you can just let us know that you've confirmed them and that they're, they're accurately reflected, that would be great.
And I can do that to confirm if they're accurately reflected, definitely.
And if you could do that same thing for police too, that would be great. And then where are all the other items that are? I want to think whoever did the red line comparison for the contracts. That was extremely helpful. But for every red line that's in here, I think it would be great to see where the increase is captured and what the, what the, the, the total revenue impact is for those, for those years. Which, I mean, if you do something like this, it will be there, right?
Right.
And I hope this got recorded, but I, I would really request that the, that language be added to make sure it says, if supported by budget and approved by the council. Because I, I just think that we, as a fiscal body, you know, we're reviewing these, the budget every year. And, and it's always been our goal to give pay increases, and we have. So there's a commitment to do pay increases. And I think there's no one sitting out there that knows that we have not done them. And we continue to do them, and we will continue to do them as long as we can. I just think it's prudent to put that language in there. It was in there before. It needs to be put back.
Counselor.
And if it wasn't, it needs to be in there now.
Yeah, Brad Boswell from Faygriff, I drafted the agreement. And your red line document, you're welcome.
The previous agreement or this agreement?
This one, this one.
Okay, so I'm talking about the previous one.
You're talking about the previous one.
Yeah.
So the, the way that we have this done, and I'm just talking purely technically, not from a policy position. But the way that we drafted it is that the salary increases, longevity increases, the changes to accrual time, all of those things, they're subject to either updates to the ordinance or the council setting the annual salary ordinance that you do through a resolution. So this is what we've negotiated. But every year, the council will have to pass the annual salary ordinance, and that'll be reflected. So that is, that is captured in this. That mechanism remains in place.
So tell me, show me where it says that about the salary increases. Because I, if it's in there, that's great. And I'm, I don't want a general overall statement. I mean specifically as it relates to the salary increases.
Should be in both, yeah.
While, while he's looking for that, Controller.
I've got some other questions.
Controller, when you, when you're looking at those numbers. Controller, when you, when you're looking at those numbers, it just dawned on me, please make sure that it's, you know, that's rough back-of-the-napkin thing to just do 8%. We, we know the 8% is a little higher, because we got rid of probationary officer, and we're paying them at a significantly higher rate, so that would need to be reflected in that increase as well.
And it's already increased. It's already reflected in our budget.
In the personal services line?
That might be why it was higher than when I was doing that.
Yeah, and, and you did that based on hiring re-officers? Or how did you do it?
So, we basically assumed, we based that on hiring, having a staffing of 67, 58 police officers in 2025, and then fully staffed, I believe, 87, 83 for fire. We did factor in all the longevidities and, and the base salary and the probationary officers.
Okay, so what was your factor, then? Because it would have to be higher than 8%. So, what, what factor, you had a factor-
Using 2025 as the base.
Yep.
And each rank had a different request for 2025 in the CBA, so it was not all at 5%. But we did factor those individually to get the base rate, and then used, did a 5% on the base for 2025. That's how we got the 9.25 for police, for fire. What's more, sorry, please?
For 2024, though.
2025.
2025 says 10.2.
Sorry?
2025 says 10.2. 2024 says 9.
I'm sorry, I meant, yes, I meant, I meant 2025, or the number, the 9.25 for 2025.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'll just wait until you verify and-
Sorry, and, you guys-
Yeah, we're done.
I want to get your question, and I have another one for you.
And I, and I remember this, and I'm glad that you asked me this specifically, because I remember going through this with Amber Finley. So, because of the way the salary ordinance works, and it's, and it's set in ordinance, right? Like, you have to approve it every year in the budget. Our take on it was, we didn't necessarily have to have it in the contract, because it was, it was almost moot. Like, the contract doesn't trump the, the ordinance in any way. So, if the ordinance says X, and the contract says Y, the ordinance will govern. So, because you set the salary ordinances annually, you're going to have to approve it every time. And so, we didn't put that clause in there, because it was almost like, we were agreeing to them that this is what we're looking to provide and pursue, but we couldn't hold the council in this agreement to that. So, we didn't put it in there that way. You're going to have to approve it every time.
We, yeah, that, we know that, right?
Yeah, so that's what, that's what, that's what we were saying. We didn't word it that way, because we can't bind the council. We're just saying, this is what we've agreed to pursue on your behalf.
Right. And so, it doesn't bind us to put the language in there that way, because of what you've already explained. We have a salary ordinance-
Right.
-every year that dictates the salary. It was in there previously.
Okay.
And I think as showing a commitment to police and fire, it almost seems like, if we don't put it in there, it's not even worth the paper it's written on, if what we're saying is, you can't hold us to any of this. It's the salary ordinance that's going to dictate how much you get paid. So, I could have 20% on here and only give you 3 on the salary ordinance. But for me, whatever I put in here and I agree to is what I want to commit to making sure, and I'm sure that's what the administration and police and fire did. We're putting something in here that we're going to do the work, we're going to cut expenses where we can, to make sure that for these years, we can pay these people what we have committed to. I would feel more comfortable for the membership to know that the council is on board for the 5, 3, 3, 3, but you have to understand, this is a partnership, this is a collaborative effort. We have to keep expenses at bay in order to be able to sustain this. So, I would like to make a recommendation that the language be added, and it's only a sentence, and it would make me feel better about this salary section, and I don't know how others feel.
I would tell you procedurally, even though it's not substantive, that a change in that way would, I believe, have to necessitate a new union vote, because you're making a change to the contract.
We're not making a change. We're not changing the terms or what we've said at all, and we've done subs, we've done changes like these in the past, and because we didn't change the numbers, and because we were able to get those changes made. Also, I think it's a little presumptive for anyone to think that this council may not have not one change. Okay? So, this is not, go back and do whatever you need to do and make the change. I mean, you saying that leads me to believe that if we do anything, it's going to be problematic. Well, it's not going to be problematic. You had a process that you went to, to change it. No one should have a problem with that. We're not changing what we've committed to from a salary perspective for the next three years.
All right, we'll, we'll look at it.
Well, we hope so, if we can vote on it. I hope you take more than a look. I, I do have to, I, I got a question back to him, because I want to explain to him why I want him to take more than a look at it. Us up here as council people, we are citizens of the city, voted by the citizens to represent the neighborhoods that we live within. We are a new council up here with a few of us who've been around the block a little bit. So, unless some of these questions come out, and some of these questions we're asking is to educate our fellow council people, so that when we make decisions, we are ed, being educated. So, I think if Counselor, and I don't want to speak for everyone, but, and please someone speak up if, if I'm wrong, but I think if Counselor Chavis had not asked that series of questions in that way, and we were the next, next year, we would read that as, we have to do this, even though procedurally, we would go through the procedure, but what's the CBA's done, you know what I mean? People don't bridge it. So, we want to make sure, I get, some of us also could be leave, I've, I've been on the council, I've had two, three members leave in middle of terms, come in. So, it's best to over-explain.
Yeah.
I always say, the worst thing about being a councilman is people hide the ball, and you don't even know the ball is being hidden. So, that's why we're asking. So, I hope that you do more than consider, and I hope whatever inconvenience that it gives to folks, we don't mean that in that way. We want to make sure we have everything right, so that we can do our job to the best of our abilities, representing the neighborhoods that we live within. If, and I hope that you take that back downtown to Faybury and work that out for us. I tell Joe Larry to work it out for me.
Oh, well, then it's not, definitely not getting done, if Joe's involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I hear what you're saying, and if there are sort of procedural questions about the way a component of this works, I'm happy to provide some clarity. And that was a good question, because we did look at that to say, to what extent are we, are we creating a binding situation here? And of course, we, we can't do that. We can't bind the council through the CBA agreement. So, that's a good question, right? And that was largely why myself and Amber thought this is the correct way.
Most of our folks don't understand that.
Yeah, right, yeah, and that's why it's a good question. So, if there are others like that, I'm, I'm happy to do it. But certainly, I think this language is what we felt like as the legal counsel, what was the most sort of appropriate way to say, the administration and the union has agreed to this, but that is certainly different than binding the council. And I think there's a legitimate question about the extent to which, because this agreement is between the union and the administration. It's not between, like, the council and the union.
That's why it's important that it's in there, because what is between the council and LPD and, and the police is, LFD and LPD is the salary ordinance. And without that-
Yes.
-none of this is possible.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So, all right, with that being said, I got a question for Humphrey, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, related to, is this right here?
I said, I don't care-
It's in there.
Where is it? That's what I asked when I started with. If I missed it, tell me where it is.
Article 1, section 5, terms of agreement. This agreement between the parties constitutes a four-year settlement, based on the following assumptions.
We knew it was in there. He just admitted that it was in there, and that he, they chose not to put it in there, because he explained their theory and all of that. So, you know, that, he's, yeah.
So, all of this is, it's saying that all of this is an assumption. What Zach's saying is that we have a clause in there that says, everything that we're agreeing on is based on this assumption, that like, the revenues and the tax levies and all those things will hold up, right?
We prefer to have that in there.
Right, right. So, that's the language that says, like, look, this, this whole thing could go out the window if, like, there's a big depression or something. That, that's the protection.
Right, which I want to talk about that right now.
Right, which is different than saying, like, we are going to bind the council to a specific ordinance, right? So, you have this protection that says, well, things could change, right, in general sense, but that's a little, that's a little different than, like, you, you, the council shall do this, because we can't do that in this agreement.
Can he repeat the, where the, where I can find that, please?
Say, one, Article 1, Section 5, terms of the agreement. Four-year agreement, based on the assumptions that the tax levies are guaranteed by the appropriate authorities, and the department receives the revenue necessary to fund the operating pension.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Where is Article 1, Section 5?
Page-
Or, wait a minute, wait, let me finish my thing. For police.
Oh.
If I don't see it-
You signed it, fire. Page, I'm looking at the clean copy.
Do we have the clean copy?
Yes.
Article 1, 6, 5.
So, I only see it for fire. I don't see it for police.
In police, it's in a different spot, so if you turn to page, on the clean copy, if you turn to page 35, Article 7, terms and conditions of agreement.
Article 7.
Page 35.
We, we don't have page numbers.
I don't either.
Your clean copy should have-
No.
Oh, really?
We don't have page numbers.
34. It's on 34, goes to 35.
I don't, we don't have it on here, so we may have a different copy.
I'm not sure.
This is what was-
City police?
See, we have no page numbers.
I got a page number. Page what?
They put the page numbers on the back.
Next to the last page.
They got them on the back.
Page 35.
They don't have them on the front.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah.
They're on the back.
To the Article 7.
Wow.
Yeah, Section 2.
Okay, we're there.
There it is.
Sections 1, 2.
Page 34.
1, 2, and 3. 3, 2.
Okay, good.
Salary base, but-
Section 2, Section 2.
So, you do have it in there. Okay. I'm sorry, I missed, when, when Zach stood up, I thought you were talking about the old agreement, not the new one. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Here, pass it to, here you go.
So, there are some, like, minor structural differences between fire and police. That's one, where the fire has it in the front, police have it in the back. But that's just the nature of, as these things evolve over time. But it's the same sort of clause that says, like, in the event that the economy changes or what have you, you have this protection, that these assumptions may not hold. Yeah.
Because it's not guaranteed that the general fund will grow 4% either, right? That's not a guarantee from the state, is it?
He doesn't have that.
For two years, it's set by state statute. So, for '25 and '26, current state law says that you have a 4% max levy growth cap, right? And they could change, I mean, it's state statute, it could go up, it could go down, but right now-
We've got two years of 4%.
-they say 25, 26, 4% cap.
Okay, good, that's smart. That's the stuff we don't know, I mean, I don't know these things.
Can I, can I, in that same section that you're speaking of, Article 7, base salary, pension base?
Pension.
It says, "For any increase in LFD," is that?
Where are you looking? I'm sorry, ma'am.
Page 34.
Page 34. Base salary and pension base. First line. Should that be for Lawrence Police Department?
Yeah, Lawrence Police Department says, "Operating and pension."
Yeah, she's saying that there's a typo.
It's a typo. It's a typo.
This is the police book.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It says LFT.
But it also, she's-
I don't know that we're looking at the same copy. I'm sorry, you may have an outdated version, because I have-
No, this was the new one. It was given to us today.
Yeah, but it might have been a bad version.
It may have been a bad version.
This one might be.
Before it-
Yeah.
For any increase-
Fire's-
7.
It's 7.
7.
It doesn't say.
That would be the next page on yours. Operating and pension. A typo.
And also, I, I understand there's intricacies between police and fire, but fire says salary and pension, which in my mind is correct and answers the concern that I have. But police says, "Operating and pension."
Where does it say that? Sorry.
On the page you just referred us to, 34.
7.
The very last sentence.
The first.
Well, yeah, the very last sentence of Section 1. Article 7, Section 1, last sentence.
And your, and I'm sorry, what's your concern about it?
I wanted to say salary and pension.
Okay.
And then, that'll take care of the concern on the increase section.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor.
I got, I got one, not for you, sir, for Humph, for Mr. Humphrey or Controller, I got a, I got something that-
Oh, Jesus.
I want to see if I'm interpreting this correctly on this sheet here, guys, and I hope my fellow councilors follow along, because I'm hoping this tells a story.
Be careful.
In 2023, I'm looking at the operating balance, which is the operating balance, that is our reserve, right, in the general fund. So, you go all the way to the bottom, your last yellow line.
Yes, yes, that's the reserve, correct.
Can you, I don't want to make any assumptions. Why is the reserve 31% in '23?
That's based on the actuals for 2023, where we finished '23 at.
Right. I, I can tell you why. We blocked a whole bunch of spending that they wanted to spend, they wanted, the prior administration wanted to spend the reserve down, okay? So, we blocked it. So, then, in the next budget for '24, they went into the reserves for the shortfall, so it goes to 26%, right? Then, the following year, so that's a 5% drop that was pulled. So, then, the following year, and now it's 2%, 2%, 2%, it goes up. I don't know, I kind of want to know why it goes, why we project a little upkick in '23, which will help me to understand, maybe, kind of dwarf the, the thinking that I'm having. But my question is, what is our plan to ensure that we hold the line on the reserve? And if the reserve had not been so high, would we be able to meet the need? Because we would have dipped under the 20, under the 20%. I'm fearful about, I'm very concerned about the reserve going under the 20%, right?
Right.
Because I'm, if I understand correctly, once we get under that, it causes other things that can occur based on that. And so, I'm looking at the downward term of taking off of this just based alone, and so I'm trying to understand what would be the financial, it's one thing to account for the dollars, but what is the financial strategy to ensure that we hold the line on our reserve outside of just the 4% growth in the, in the general fund? Because, you know-
So, the same thing that we did for the 2025 budget, the first thing that we did is to ensure that we're not dropping below the 20%. That was the guiding factor at whatever cost. We were lucky, because we did have the ARP funding, and we did have the GEO bond, which I consider alternative funding. So, to ensure that, so we would never bring a budget before you if it drops below the 20% without involving you way, way before, right? But our guiding line is, that's the policy. Whatever budget we make for, let's say, 2027, it has, the first number one criteria is, it has to be above the 20%. Should it fall there, below that, that's where we make the cuts on the areas that, that need to be cut.
So, what I'm getting at is, is it fair to say, I want this on the record- So what I'm getting at is, is it fair to say, I want this on the record, is it fair to say that we should never approve a budget with more than a two percent deficit budget? According to this. So like, you, we only can, in your projections, right?
Correct.
You're already projecting that you gotta be, you gotta go two percent out of the reserves to meet this need. Am I reading this, understanding this correctly?
And I'm sure, I'm not sure what year you're looking at, because we are.
So I'm looking at like, uh, in twenty-six, twenty-five to twenty-six. Like, I'm looking at the, the line of the operating balance.
In twenty-six, we'll be two percent over the required twenty percent of the reserve.
Right, but it keeps dropping two percent every year. You keep going, it looks to me as you're going to use two percent of the reserves to balance your budget, projected forecast budget, or forecast on this fund.
That's not what I'm showing here. I'm just showing that for 2026 and 2027, we'll maintain two percent above the twenty percent requirement of the twenty percent threshold in the general fund. And then in 2028, we are gonna maintain three percent of the twenty percent required of the general, uh, general fund reserve.
So that was, second question was, why does it go up a percentage?
Again, making projections that far out can only be best assumption, best case assumption, because it's too far out. But this is just based on the belief that we had, and we used a professional company to use this. So this is just assumption based on what's currently there, four percent max levy on the general fund, which could change at any time.
With a four percent max levy, you still gotta go get two percent out of the reserve.
Not according to this one. I'm not sure where you see the dip in two percent.
Okay, I guess I'm, I, we could talk offline. I'm not gonna push the meeting over because I'm not understanding maybe budgeting. We could.
And, and the other line item, I just wanted to, the eight percent that Counselor Chavez brought up, I, I went back and did the math. So we are using twenty-five as the baseline, Counselor Chavez. So the ten, two forty-eight, nine forty-eight, jump to ten, five five six, four fourteen. I believe if I'm interpreting you correctly, you're looking at the five percent increase in twenty-five, and then the three percent increase, and you're saying that's an eight percent increase, which is correct. However, I don't think we should be looking at the eight percent increase in twenty-six against the revenue projections for twenty-six, which is the twenty-eight million. We should look at the revenue, since you are combining the two years, you should look at the revenue for twenty-five and twenty-six, then you can fairly say eight percent of those two.
That makes sense to you. That doesn't make sense to me, because twenty-five is coming out of funds that we will no longer have.
Well, I'm just saying, if you, if you go, if you, because what you're doing, you're aggregating it. And you're saying, okay, in year two, it's at eight percent. Year three is at nine, ten, eleven percent.
No, because the three percent every year after, it's then rightsized. I mean, we're not taking all the money. I think I keep hearing you say this, but correct me, please, if I'm wrong. Are we funding, this is the question, any percentage of salaries, equipment? All these red line change documents that will lead to an increase for your factor, are we paying for any of those things out of ARPA? Any?
Yes, the perf line, we are. However, the presentation that you have, the analysis that you have on there for, for personal line services is including all the benefits, the salaries, base salary and the benefits for all police, policemen and the, and the firefighters.
So all I'm asking you is, what is that factor? That's it. You took something times the number of policemen, and you took something times the number of firemen.
Which is their base salary.
Well, you just said base salary, all their benefits, all their equipment, all this stuff.
Correct.
What is that number? That's it.
So the ten, two forty-eight that you see basically includes.
No, that's, that's, that's a, that's a total number. What number did you use? What factor did you use to get that number? I mean, was it ninety thousand? I don't know what it was. I'm asking you. So if it's to each officer, you should have a factor for each one. I'm just asking you. All I'm just asking you is how you got to the number. That's it. How do I know this number's right? How do I know that this number is inclusive of everything that is on here? And I'm not saying that it's wrong. I'm saying, show me how you got the number. That's all I'm asking.
Since we're so thin. That's why it's so, so, because we're so thin.
Yeah, us being off a little bit is a lot. Because we're that tight. So I'm, that's all I'm asking. And you don't have to give me that answer right here. I don't, I don't, I don't even want you to.
I'll be glad to look into that and then email you all, if that, if that's okay with you.
That would be great.
Man, my head hurts now.
Thank you. Yes, yes.
You had called out the, the reference to the other department that we thought was a typo. It actually is not a typo, and I'm happy to explain why. So, and this is in both contracts, although in slightly different verbiage, but it's the same thing. So this is what's called a parity clause. So what it's saying here is that any increase, the other department, one that is covered by this contract will also get that. So what it's saying here in the police agreement is that if for some reason we increase fire's pension base, you know, their salary or pension, then the other one also gets it. So it's not a typo. It's just referencing the other department for the purposes of the parity clause. Yeah, sorry. When I looked at it closer, I was like, oh, no, that's not what that is. So, yeah. Does that make sense? Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good catch, though.
Okay, any other questions?
So, hold on. Yes, hold on. Let me look at my sheet and I. Oh, okay. I need, I need someone. There was a change. And I've got, I gotta find it. It's about the retirement. And it's about the forty-six to forty-nine percent. You guys know what I'm talking about? Can you? I'm trying to find it here real quick. I read it.
You have the rundown for police. It's on page two, under retiree health insurance.
Is it page where?
It's at page two.
Which one are you looking for?
What page is it?
Are you looking, are you grabbing your, your rundown sheet?
Of the red line?
Oh, the red line. I'm sorry.
The red line, but the rundown. The few pages?
Yeah, the two. Yeah, okay.
You're looking at the FOP.
Okay.
Two, retiree health insurance.
Yeah.
And then that cross references to the red line, FOP contract, page thirty-two, thirty-five.
Mine says, I'm talking about the retirement. Okay, yeah, talk about that one. And then the other one that I want you to talk about is page thirty-three, retirement accrual payment. Because I just have a question about that.
So the, the stipend, so this will be the first time we try to include that into our contract. For those that don't know, our retirees receive a stipend. They can also opt to be in our city's insurance. This is our current practice. This is what we pay. We're just solidifying it in our contract. We already pay for these services to our retirees at that rate. We didn't change the rate at what it, what it happens. But there's nothing protecting our retirees from receiving, not receiving that stipend. So we wanted to solidify that for our retirees for the next four years. It's no addition, again, that's no additional, it's not anything different from what we currently do for our retirees, but we're just trying to solidify that in our contract.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Okay. And then the retirement accrual payment, I know that was talked about briefly. But do we know, I know that the comment was mentioned the other night, that we have a lot of folks in the, in fire, probably in police, too.
With fire.
But mostly fire that are eligible for retirement now.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
And so my question really, it's sorted to you, Nick, and then it's, it's to our controller. You know, how many announced retirements do we have for twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six?
Twenty-five, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, we have three, three announced retirements in twenty twenty-five.
And do we have anything beyond that?
I don't know if anybody else has signed up for the drop.
We don't have any announced retirements. To give you an idea of who had over twenty years on. Those people are eligible.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
There's only three expected retirements.
And, um, and that's twenty-four that are eligible.
Eligible, yes.
And then, and that's for twenty twenty-five? And then that number was higher? Is safe to say in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven?
We'll see that increase every year until two thousand twenty-nine, and then that'll kind of cap off for a little bit.
Okay, okay. And then I guess my question for the controller is.
Counselor, can I, are we still with Resolution Number Eight, or have we gone to Resolution Number Nine?
Yeah, I think both of them, a lot of these things are baked, they're, they're, they're the same. So it's, it's easier for us all to get up here and talk about.
This is a contract change, contract change. Was that, were those projections, and that's just police, I mean, fire, I want to know what the numbers are for police as well for twenty twenty-five?
You just want to, no, there's, there's fine police on there.
For retirements in twenty twenty-five? I'm asking for. For twenty twenty-five? So six eligible for police. And out of those six that are eligible, how many have stated that they're retiring in twenty twenty-five? And do you, do you have a sense what you typically average, like over the past few years for retirements?
Well, last year was kind of a.
Different, right? Yeah.
But, that's very, I mean, we don't have many retirements.
You say like one to two? On average, one to two? Last year was an anomaly?
Yeah, last year was, I would say, two to three. Yeah, two to three.
Okay.
I'd say transfer to an anomaly.
Okay, so this is as a, a question that, that I want to ask and as it relates to what we're looking to agree to in this contract. Are we prepared that in twenty twenty-five, we sign this agreement, we have anywhere from four to six officers, we might request some payouts, right? Because they can. If we prove this, they're entitled to it. And, you know, these numbers are going to be big because these people have been here a long time. So are we prepared to absorb, if we have four to six officers, say, you know what, I want to take, I want to take a, a year. I want to be paid a year.
And that's what I was trying to lead to in my series of questions about the general fund projection, that if you're projecting across the line and a curve ball comes and you gotta go get that money out your savings account, you know, that's what I was trying to get at. Will that dip us and put us in a place where our city is not, you know.
And I understand.
A plus rating and all that crap.
Yeah.
From those days.
Well, and I know that, you know, they have the option to taking cash or putting it in their retirement. So I understand that. But from a financial risk perspective, you have to be prepared for the payout, you know? And actually, you still pay it out. You just pay it out to the retirement, right? The city still pays it out. It's just where it goes. It either goes to the retiree or it goes to the retirement plan. So it's a payout.
So what?
No matter what, right? That's the question.
Also, not only, yes, you do pay it out, but with the other option, they can pay it out over three years. So the city could plan to know, hey, this officer or firefighter is going to retire. They're going, they want their payout to be in repayments over three.
What makes them do that? Why would I do that?
Maybe you just need the money.
Taxes?
Taxes. That's a good answer. Taxes. That's a good answer. That's what I want to know. That's a good answer.
So the other.
We have to assume they're gonna take.
Question, is that?
They might take the payout.
Three-year payout, historically, is that preferred?
We haven't had it.
It has not been. You know I'm in the security business.
So to answer your question of whether and how prepared we are to deal with that, it's the payout fund, which I believe tomorrow we'll be discussing about additional appropriation on that specific fund for two hundred thousand. So one of my proposals to the council is to allow the transfer of eight hundred to a million to that fund. And we can do that on a yearly basis and keep that almost like as an irrevocable fund strictly for payouts.
We gotta take the money from the reserves.
Correct.
That's what I was getting at about the two and the three percent, was that, that's what I was trying to say, is that if you gotta go over there to keep making a hole, how long do we go over there and it ain't nothing over there to go get, or it affects us? And that's why I'm concerned about expenditures over, you know, over revenue.
And, 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 and you know, those questions are all valid, but I think we're getting to a point where we have to discuss on do we even have enough revenues to sustain us? Should we talk about the revenues? Because these operations are always gonna be there. Retirees are always gonna be there, and payouts need to be paid. But I think the best way, I think that I would recommend as the controller, we should now focus on how can we increase our revenues? Because clearly they're shrinking. I think everyone in this room agrees to that.
Yes, that is, that is the discussion.
But you have to first, before you go get a second job, you have to agree that you need to go get a second job. And I, you see what I'm saying? Like, I'm using it as a household, right? Before you decide that we need more income, you have to decide, you have to agree that. And that is the debate that I feel that we're having as good people here and there. The debate is, can we afford it? Can we make the numbers do what it do? Yeah. But can I really afford it, sustain it, and how much sacrifice do I have to make to afford it? And that is the unfortunate, I feel, is my job to try to balance. And that's why I'm asking and scrutinizing and asking so many questions. And I hope it doesn't come across that we don't support you. It's just, I'm trying to decipher all of that, because when I look at the book, when he said pots of money, that's what my earlier comment was. I don't see a overflowing pot of money. I see pots of money to go into, but I don't see it running, running over it. Right? Nobody should be going, and so there we go. And then that leads to, when you guys say financial parameters, I get it about the four percent and some of the stuff. But there's some things that we may have purchased, or we might be talking about purchasing, that maybe if you get the money, right? Like, I'd like to take a lot of vacations, so I don't drive a Corvette. If I decided to stay in Indiana and not take a lot of vacations, I would drive a Corvette. It's a trade-off, right? And so the same, I'm just saying, so even when you got a lot to play with, and that's the point.
So, Controller, if you can just email us the factor information, I think that's, that would be good. And I'd like to make a motion that we recommend it to full counsel.
Second.
So moved. Yep, so moved.
Um, we need a roll call. We need a vote.
Yeah, take a vote for a favorable recommendation.
Oh, now we'll take a, a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those that want to say nay? Okay, it's unanimous. It's going to full counsel. With the corrections?
Yes, he.
Any email?
With the corrections, yes.
Verbiage where it said operations, you want to change that to salary? That's sufficient? We're good there? Okay. And I checked with the, these guys, and my recommendation is, I think, like, that's not substantive. So we can make that verbiage change and. So we can make that verbiage change, and that'll reflect on what you see. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have, under new business, resolution number nine, twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the common council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, concerning approval of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lawrence and the Lawrence Professional Firefighters Association, Local 416, effective January one, twenty twenty-five. At the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four council meeting, the resolution was referred to this committee for consideration and recommendation. And who do we have? Zach.
I'd like to just make a motion that we recommend it to full counsel. We, we worked through them together, and we, let's just make a motion. I'd like to make it.
All those in favor, say aye.
I second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those who want to say nay, it's unanimous.
Motion for a German?
A motion for a German.